Recording in progress. Okay, good evening. It is Wednesday, December 20th, and I'd like to call this meeting to the school, of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting in the middle school collaborative room, and it is 6:32. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this is a hybrid meeting. If you wish to join the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 865-3049-4155. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on public access Facebook page, as well as the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I would ask you to rise to salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome, i.e. the public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about an individual student are prohibited by state and federal law. So first, is there anyone on the committee with a public comment? Mr. Beadmore?
Thank you. I have, I had some email traffic earlier this week with the superintendent and the Chair, and I think I gave Carol a heads up this morning that I would be making this comment. This weekend, on Sunday, we had, to the best of my recollection, the area's fourth major rain event of the year. We are obviously in a very strange weather pattern this year. We've had massive flooding events in Leominster and in Fitchburg, and another substantial rain event that hit the entire area earlier this year, just before Sunday. And on Sunday, several roads apparently were shut down over the latter course of the day on Sunday, into Sunday night and Monday morning. Monday morning, I was out running an errand. At 9:03 a.m., I received a reverse 911 call from the school department saying that there were four bus routes that had been interrupted by road closures in Lunenburg, and that the school administration had just been informed by the bus company. And I can only imagine the chaos that ensues when bus drivers who were following a specific route to pick up specific kids cannot pass roads, and they have no idea that this is going to happen. And the downstream events that that have with, that has with dispatchers who are seeking to reroute them, communication in the administration office, once they begin to find out what's happening, and for parents who may or may not be there when their kids are waiting for the bus, expecting them to take them to school for the day. There's an enormous downstream effect. And what was evident from the email, and then evident from my subsequent conversations via email with the superintendent and the police chief, is that the schools were not notified of multiple road closures in town prior to the buses going on the road. And I inquired of both the police department and the DPW. I did hear back from the, from the police chief, and he did acknowledge the issue. In my opinion, this should basically follow the same protocol as a snowstorm. But because it was raining and not snow, it seemed to have been an oversight. And I just think that we need to do a better job coordinating as a town. This is a town issue, not a school department issue. But unfortunately, our bus company and our parents and our kids got the short end of this one. And I, number one, want to acknowledge it because I think we owe our constituents an acknowledgement of what happened Monday morning. But more importantly, I think we need to take steps to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brzezinski?
Yeah, it's actually, it's been an ongoing issue. We had issues with this last year when the water department closed part of the road right in front of the primary driveway at preschool pickup time, and half the driveway was closed. And we had people going in and people going out through a single lane, and the school department was never notified, the principal of the building was never notified. So I think we really need to put a mechanism in place where if the DPW is going to close roads, if the police department's going to close roads, there should be a way administrations notified because that does affect the school bus routes or parent pickup or things in town.
I would agree.
But I do appreciate that the notice went out about the bus routes. I didn't get it till 8:58 when the kids were already on the bus and had a moment of panic of, are they stuck somewhere? But I do appreciate it went out and that we communicated that aspect of it. But we should have known ahead of time and should have been able to plan a little better. Did everybody get to school okay? Did everybody get to school on time?
No. That's why we were alerted.
But everybody, all the kids, we did, everybody got to school safely and?
There were no issues. I would have advised you if they had any issues.
Okay. Any public comment from the public?
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Speaking to you this evening as a resident, lifelong resident of Lunenburg. Later in your agenda this evening, you're going to be voting on the possible release of documents that we've pulled from the safe area across from where my dad's office was back in his days in the school. Documents reaching back to the early 1950s. I also wanted to mention, and I've shown this to a couple people, this is a scrapbook that was presented to my dad after the event of naming the school in his name. And there are articles in here and pictures and letters from all over the country and a few from all over the world. All of the materials that are appropriate to be displayed publicly, we expect will be available in the Lunenburg Historical Society building going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one more public comment I forgot about. I went to the Craft Fair.
Yes.
At the, that was in the cafeteria. It was held by the soccer, the soccer team, and it was fantastic. So thanks to them for putting that together. Santa Claus made an appearance. That was very exciting. So thank you for that. That was a really great event.
Great. And nobody online with a comment. Okay. Then we will continue with the Chair's report. At our last meeting, a liaison to green communities was discussed. And Mr. Eric Hievi, our facilities director, has volunteered to be that liaison. We thank him for doing so, and we'll be looking forward to hearing from him with information from green communities. I'd also like to thank the secretaries and the community for participating in the annual gift drive. I'm sure many families will benefit greatly from the generosity. And I want to wish everyone the happiest of holidays and a healthy Happy New Year. And that's all I have. Next is minutes. There were no minutes in the aisle, so we can skip that. Warrants. We have signed warrants between the 5th of December, bless you, through the 18th of December in the amount of $591,780.80. And those should have been available to you if you wanted to peruse them. Did anyone have any questions regarding the warrants?
I think I'm missing the warrants 1113 through, oh, it just disappeared, through 1205. I don't have access to that folder.
Okay, we will remedy that.
So I haven't been able to review those.
Alrighty. I'll sit with them? Okay. Onto the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. This year, we'll be doing something a little bit different timeline-wise with our pre-K and kindergarten registration. We will open kindergarten registration on January 1st, and we can do that because last year we converted our registration forms to an online format. So we'll make them available at the start of the new year, January 1st, and parents can complete them at a time that works best for them. We'll also be scheduling, as we have in recent years, several evening hours for families to make appointments to bring in those original documents that are required for proof of residency in order to complete the paperwork with our registrar. In order to separate kindergarten registration from pre-K registration, we're going to open pre-K registration a little bit later this year on March 1st. Hopefully, that reduces some of the overlap in appointment times and so on with our secretarial support staff. We are also planning to hold our annual parent kindergarten readiness meeting on January 30th at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom. And we will be promoting information regarding this event via multiple venues. Facebook emails, website, Pat Bull to Board, et cetera. A little bit of news, since this has been something of interest of late. The MSBA sent out a message that they will be accepting statements of interest for consideration in 2024 on Friday, January 12th at 10 a.m. The SOI closing date for districts submitting for consideration for an accelerated repair program. And those are primarily for the partial or full replacement of roofs and/or windows and doors in an otherwise structurally sound facility. Deadline is March 1st. The closing date for districts submitting for consideration under the core program, and that's for projects that would be more extensive renovations or new builds. That deadline is Friday, April 12th. Piece of information that I think is worth sharing. We belong to the Worcester County Superintendent's Association. At their December meeting, we learned that the Mass Association of Schools Superintendent's Executive Committee met with Commissioner O'Reilly and members of his staff. And at that meeting, the executive committee shared superintendent's concerns regarding a lack of qualified business managers and the many openings across districts statewide. The Department of Ed is working to develop different paths to licensure for this position. Additionally, the executive committee also shared that superintendents across the state are feeling overwhelmed with the amount of work resulting from continuous initiatives, grant requirements, and unfunded mandates. The commissioner confirmed that he recently met with his team and discovered that there were 400 initiatives currently underway at, from the Department of Ed or the Federal Department of Education. And he agreed that we need to reduce those, and he will be working with his team on that. In other news, the water main replacement project on Mass Ave.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is. It's very exciting. Because maybe I won't be getting those 3 a.m. phone calls that say there's no water at the primary school. So as you may be aware, water main breaks on Mass Ave had have, they have had some impact on the primary school in recent years. When the water main breaks and the water is shut off, oftentimes, our primary school has no water, and we then either have to cancel school for the day or dismiss students early unexpectedly. So we're really excited that this project is on the horizon. And we've been advised that this project will likely begin in the spring. In my communications with the water district, they've let me know that as a timeline is ultimately set, they'll provide an update to us, and we'll be able to provide that communication out to staff and families. And I'll provide that update to the committee as well. We have a few January reminders. All schools and offices are closed the week of December 12th for the winter break, but they will reopen on Tuesday, January 2nd.
Oh, you said week of December 12th with December?
Oh, December 25th, sorry. It'd be nice if we could go back in time and close the schools for a week. I think we all need some rest. School committee meetings, January 3rd and the 17th. The 3rd will be hybrid from Town Hall at 6:30. The 17th, hybrid from this location here at the Middle High School at 6:30. January 12th is an early release day for professional development for staff. January 15th, all schools and offices will be closed in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And lastly, I too would like to offer a message of happy holidays to all of those in our community that will be celebrating Christmas and funza. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. We do not have a student representative present. Is there one online?
I am not seeing one.
All right, then we will move on. In new business, we have an action item declaring surplus TCP artifacts.
As you may recall, I had indicated at our last meeting that it had been some outreach to me. We have some interest in any of the photos and other documents that might still be located at the TC Passios School. So we went through the safe at TCP, and we did retrieve from storage some photographs, a couple of plaques, a Town of Lunenburg summary report on long-range general plans that was dated December of 1961, a binder containing documents compiled by a previous school building committee. And those documents are dated late 1950s, early 1960s. And they do include plans, drawings for a new school, not the TC Passios. Apparently, the school was never built. There are also dozens of newspaper clippings related to the school building project and the TC Passios School. So I had offered to the committee an opportunity to come and look at those artifacts. I don't know if you would like to delay a vote on this because not, not all members of the committee were able to get in to review those artifacts themselves. But you may wish to consider whether or not you want to retain possession of these documents or declare them as surplus and potentially therefore allow the Lunenburg Historical Society to take possession of any of the documents or items that might be of interest to them. And I'd also ask you to consider if there are items that are not of interest to them that you might want to consider giving those over to the PTO so that they might include them as artifacts that they might be able to sell as part of their annual spring fundraising event at Hollis Hills. Maybe as a silent auction or some other way. That way, members of the community could know about it, and if they had interest, they could potentially go and secure some of these artifacts for themselves.
Well, I guess the first thing we need to figure out is if everyone was not able to see these items, are we comfortable deciding on what to do with them?
I was not able to review them, but I do not want to delay acting on this.
Okay.
Or don't see a need to.
Right.
I also was not able to physically see them, but I am comfortable with the descriptions given.
Okay. Then I guess we're comfortable with moving forward with it? So the next thing would be then, do we want to keep these documents or do we want to declare them surplus? I guess would be the next part.
So I just have a... Well, I'm looking for more information, but also there's a procedural question to this.
Sure.
What does it, what does declaring something surplus entail? What does that, what does that mean?
So in other words, before, we would be able to, let's say, discard old curriculum materials if we transitioned to an entirely new curriculum program. All of the old materials, we would bring forward, make you aware that we're looking to have them declared surplus. And then we can either discard them if they are of an age that they are no longer relevant for use somewhere else, or then potentially donate them to another organization that might be able to use those curriculum materials, et cetera. Sometimes, in the past, we've declared items as surplus and then were able to sell some, like old vehicles and things like that.
Like vehicles and stuff, yeah.
So I generally understand that concept. I think what I'm sort of getting to here is, and I think it would get to how we frame a motion here, is declaring something surplus and then making it a jump ball is not my intention.
Correct.
I want to throw it to a particular team.
Correct.
Right? So, and it's the Historical Society.
Right.
You know, and in my view, I, I understand the consideration that for stuff that they might not want, then we would want to reserve the right to maybe throw up a jump ball or direct it to another team or whatever, to retain it, right? So that would be my intention. I just, I want to be careful that we're not doing this in a way that our intentions are not, are not clear.
So perhaps, does it make sense then, or would it be a better part of valor, to say that we wish to donate these materials in its entire, in its entirety to the Historical Society? And then, if they say, "We don't want these things," we'll take them back and do step number two at a different time?
I think there's, if there's a procedural way to do that, yeah, I mean, that, that...
Well, right now, the Historical Society has not been able to review all of the artifacts that are listed here. They are aware that some of these things exist. But as they were perusing these materials in a location where student records and school records were co-located, we halted the perusal of the materials. And then I went through and pulled out things that were sort of in the vein of what they were looking for. So they have not seen any of these things. I would think that we could have them in, and then they could decide what they wanted to take. And then anything they don't want to take.
Then we can figure out what to do with it.
Well, yeah, some of it is really interesting from the school, as the school committee, like some of it I would not want to just get rid of if the Historical Society didn't want it. Like someone went through and compiled a long time ago and compiled newspaper clippings, glued in the back of poster board and construction paper, and has newspaper clippings covering the work that was done to build Brookside Elementary, the elementary that was not built. And there were some really great papers in there about the process of getting to the school, and the MSBA was called something else then, process. And there's some meeting notes in there, and there are grumblings about dealing with the state.
Really?
Yeah, and then there's, my, there was a 1965 notes document from the Lunenburg School Committee, from us, 1965, talking about the difficulties of the mile and a half busing issue and children walking to school safely because of the sidewalk, but the cost of busing. And it's, it's kind of interesting from our perspective to know that we've all, I mean, it's literally, it's the same.
There we are.
Same thing, and it talks about state support and how much the state is going to cover. And I'm not, it's not something I just want to get rid of. I think it's...
I don't think any of us just want to get rid of it.
Yeah, but if the, I would hope the Historical Society will want it, but I feel like I'd rather ask them to come look at it.
I think we could declare it as surplus with the intent of giving the Historical Society a crack at it or write a first refusal or something along those lines.
Yep, absolutely.
And then a future dissolution to be discussed.
Then we'll talk about it later.
We'll give ourselves an option to figure out if they don't want something, then what we do with it. And maybe we go the PTO route, or maybe we go stick it in the safe for another 60 years. But, you know, whatever it is.
There's newspaper clippings, there's a couple pictures of Mr. Passios as a very young man. There's the...
He looked exactly the same.
It was, it was interesting. And those blueprints for the schools were...
Interesting, yeah.
Very interesting.
So, so then I would entertain a motion to do that.
I move that we declare the items relating to school buildings in the 1950s and 60s. Is that what we're referring to?
Well, declare the items, what do you want to call this collection of things? The...
Outlined in the memo.
The items outlined in the memo.
There we go, thank you.
As surplus with the intent of making them available to the Lunenburg Historical Society. And any items not claimed by the Lunenburg Historical Society to be taken up at a later date. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, any other discussion? Because I kind of should shut that off. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's what we'll do then. Thank you. Next, we have the Keystone Annual Report. What do we know about this?
It's a rather lengthy summary of the entire year. You also have a brief update of the current status of programs and enrollments and so on. Again, it's just your standard annual report that they must provide to the districts, the members.
The new facility, are the kids in the new facility?
No, they are, they're going to have to do some construction renovation to convert the space to the kinds of usable classroom space, cafeteria space, so on and so forth. But they are anticipating that all of that work will be completed so that they can open with students next fall.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the Keystone Collaborative?
Do you need a motion to accept, Derek?
We do.
I move that we accept the Keystone Educational Collaborative Annual Report.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, onto discussion about the letter to the MSBA. Mr. Beadmore, I'm going to let you lead that discussion.
All right, thank you. So there's a draft letter in the folder that I'm going to read out loud if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Madam Chair. And the premise here is that since our last meeting, I've actually done some additional research. I've now met with two members of our state delegation. I've had a conversation with Tracy Novak at the MASC. And while the position that I, that I outlined at our last meeting of general frustration, I think remains the same, I think it's also clear to me that some of which we thought to be true, particularly when it came to the need for detailed design work on the windows. I'm sure that that was probably articulated or interpreted in some fashion or another over time. I could not actually substantiate that in the documentation that I found. And therefore, through additional conversations, it led me to believe that first of all, we're lacking at the MSBA. I think we're lacking at the MASC in terms of interest... in terms of information flow and availability of these programs, and changes, and how proposed changes are articulated, the complexity of these changes. I believe all of that to be true. But I also believe that we have a responsibility here of engagement that I'm not sure that we've fulfilled. And some of this has to do with just having our eyes on other balls. Some of it has to do with the churn that we've had in the facilities role. But I think that all of that has been sort of brought to bear on this miscue that we went through with the capital plan this year, specific to that item. And so, there was some follow-up that I think we need to do. I think that, you know, we need to ask Mr. Hevy to really engage with the MSBA and potentially bring to us a game plan, you know, either early in the next calendar year, or at the end of the school year, to say, "This is how we ought to proceed, and, you know, we should or should not initiate letters of intent," or what have you. I don't think we know right now, but hopefully, we'll get this assessment approved through the capital plan this year. We can get that ball rolling, and then as information becomes available as a result of that, we can synchronize that with the future MSBA engagement. So, I don't think all is lost here, but I do feel like we stumbled a little bit. And so, all of this is what I've tried to convey in a somewhat concise letter. So, let me read this. And this is directed to Mr. James McDonald, who's the CEO of the MSBA, and Mary Pichet, who is the executive director of the MSBA. And I hope that if we approve this, Liz can format it, because I failed seventh grade auto-write-a-letter class. "My name is Peter Beardmore, I'm writing on behalf of myself and the members of the Lunenburg School Committee. Lunenburg School District has not been involved with the MSBA for quite some time. Our last project ended with the opening of the Lunenburg Middle High School in 2016. None of our current school committee members or senior administrators were in their current roles during that project. Beginning in late 2022, we began exploring the long-term viability of our Turkey Hill Elementary School, which opened in 1969. The building was not designed for its current use. It was designed as a middle school and operated as such for the first 42 years of its existence. Its core systems are beyond or nearing the end of their reasonable lifespans. Some of the windows are original. It is not ADA compliant, there are fire safety and security concerns. However, the building is structurally sound, reasonably functional, and we're continuing to direct capital to address some of the issues, particularly those relating to fire safety and security. We have also been working with our town to determine if perhaps a long-term future for the building could include municipal uses, such as a community and teen center, a community kitchen, et cetera. We are very mindful of our debt capacity, given that our municipal government is also investigating and planning buildings. And capital requests, like in most municipalities of our size, are also heavily scrutinized. In the fall of 2023, while preparing our capital plan request as part of our normal municipal budget process, we proposed funding design, funding design for window replacement at the school." What is the wording issue there? "Intending to apply for the accelerated repair program and following guidance that was shared when the MSBA voted to reopen the program for 2024. Unfortunately, we found ourselves struggling with conflicting information relating to timelines and requirements. Proposed changes to your programs added to our confusion. We ultimately pulled our request because we didn't feel that we had the requisite clarity on MSBA programs to confidently move forward. This letter is to request that in the future, MSBA programs and communications consider school districts operating in similar circumstances. We are small, relatively new to this. We don't catch every bit of news, and simplicity and clarity are paramount. We also seek your advice on how best to prepare for future engagement." Thank you.
Can I offer some comment?
Please.
As far as the, I love it, thank you for writing this. As far as the school districts operating in similar circumstances, I just want to maybe make it a little more clear what those circumstances are. When we say we are small, we're a small town, maybe the size of it, and state that we don't have staff dedicated to just this, and that we're running on the very shoestring staffing. I mean, right now, we don't even have the budget director.
Yeah, I think that's a...
Because I feel like the larger schools have people they can put on this, and we just, we don't have a person we can say, "This is your job right now."
This came up in my conversation with Representative Kishmerick earlier this week, you know, who said, "Fitchburg has a person who's..."
Who does that?
"...part of their job is to make sure that we're, they're at the front of the line and ready with whatever the accelerated repair request of the year, or whatever that is, is." And we obviously don't scale to that, so the intent is to communicate that, but I'm happy to put in a little bit more, a little bit more clarity and detail.
More clearly drill it down, not that we're small and relatively new to this, because we're not new to it, we're just, we don't build that many buildings.
Well...
We, I mean, we built one, and we built the high school, this building.
The net-net, though, is that the individuals playing on the team right now have not played in this game.
Yep.
And that's what I'm trying to convey, but I can be a little bit more...
And as a municipality, we don't have that much experience in building buildings, because we have so few. We only do this every 30 years.
Well, we've built, we've built two schools in the last 20 years, but, you know, it's a different team on the field right now.
So, I just want to be a little more clear about what similar circumstances are.
Message her, and I can make a...
Because, yeah, I feel that's the main part, is we're small, and we don't have a person.
Yeah.
But I get your point, and I think it's well-made, and it's a good point that needs to be made.
Any thoughts, Brian?
Yeah, I had, I had to start about the, I think it's the second, sorry, no. Maybe the fourth section's kind of, it's a short line, but we have also been working with our town to determine if perhaps a long-term future for the building could include municipal uses, such as community and teen center, and community kitchen, et cetera. I think I wanted more to that, about talking about the specifics, about the concern for the requirements and the funding connection. So I had just drafted up a quick line, but something like, additionally, we were looking for clarification on requirements associated with MSBA funding and a building that could switch uses from a school building to a town building.
I'd be happy to include that. I edited this several times. And had, and had extensive paragraphs about what's going on with the Municipal Building Committee and that kind of thing. And I kept reminding myself, they don't really care about the Municipal Building Committee. What they care about is funding for school buildings. So, but I, your point around, and the timelines thing was sort of intended to non-specifically state that later in the letter. But I think that adding a little bit more detail there, as you proposed, is, I might tweak the wording a little bit, but I think we can easily work that in.
Yeah, I feel like they must go through towns. I mean, other towns must have old buildings that they convert to town buildings.
Well, I mean...
It's not uncommon thing, you would think, and they should clarify that.
And back to towns with similar circumstances, right? Like, I mean, that is exactly the issue, right? Like, you know, if you're a town of, every town in Massachusetts is at least 100 years old, I would assume at this point, right, for the most part?
I think.
And if you're under 15,000 people, you probably are dealing with issues that are similar to ours, right? And you can't look at school funding in a bubble, or a silo, or whatever the right metaphorical term is, because the funding source is ultimately the municipality, right? And so, you've got to work that as part of a broader plan. And to my knowledge, that is not acknowledged in MSBA policy.
No, I think both of those comments make sense to me. Otherwise, I'm okay.
The youngest town in Massachusetts is 103 years old.
Look at that, that's a pretty good estimate.
That's from the field.
Not bad.
The only other thing, and it was a minor detail, was I feel like it would be better coming from Carol, even though Peter's writing it, if it's going to... I feel like as our committee is made up, it's usually that Carol would send the letter.
That's, I'm happy, I'm happy to change it to make it Carol. It's not a, I literally wrote, started this sleep of conscience, you know? All right, yep.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so with those adjustments, do I have a motion to approve this letter?
Motion to approve Peter's letter with the adjustments to send to MSBA concerning the MSBA process.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All righty.
So Carol, I will try to incorporate those suggestions and send you a clean copy.
Okay, all right, that's good. We can do that. All right then, so now we are on to old business and the FY '25 budget development.
So again, for this meeting, I'm just sharing additional data that we've been looking at as we contemplate the decisions ahead relative to how we move from all that we have currently to what would a budget with a 2.5% increase, as we typically get annually, look like? Because what we have currently can't all fit within that 2.5% increase, given other increases that are known, either because they're contractual obligations, like an increase to bus transportation, or they are possible projected increases, like in the case of the health insurance increases. Again, some of these things are still unknown, it's still very early in the process. But again, I wanted to provide you some information, data, that we're looking at as we make decisions. So you have some information relative to the high school, and how the numbers of students assigned to teachers sort of breaks out there, and an average class size for a teacher, a given teacher. You can see that each teacher has a a very, a very good class size that is a good bit below the class sizes of all other grades, up through eighth grade. And you can see the total number of students carried by a teacher for the year is also, quite honestly, for a high school teacher, well, when I was a high school teacher, teaching a science class in a classroom space that was also a lab space, given the square footage of the area, we were given a limit in the science classrooms of 24 to a class because of the available space. That was given to us by the fire department for safety purposes. But I can tell you that my colleagues in other departments in regular classroom spaces had between 24, 5, 6, 7, 28 in a class. Given that a high school teacher will carry five classes, on average, your high school teacher, your content classroom teacher carries about 120, 125, 130 students for the, for a year. So with that as a a fair norm, let's say, you can see that our high school teachers here have quite a very different situation.
The comparison that you just gave, how big was the school?
It was, it was a little bit larger than than our school, but not significantly larger. Graduating classes were probably somewhere in the ballpark of 120?
Not a lot larger.
Yeah, not much different.
My, and I, you know, I could be told I didn't see this document until tonight, so I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. But as you say that, I mean, you know, at first glance, I think that those are, that's really important data. I do think that we have to kind of put this through the filter of, you know, the state is measuring us, and these scores matter to our kids, and our family, and our property values, and all those kinds of things. The state does measure us on things like number of AP classes we offer, and those kinds of things, right? And when you start adding AP, you know, beyond the bio, physics, chemistry, and now you're into all kinds of other sciences, like you start to, I would imagine, move into much lower densities in those AP classes. And it's not just to pick on AP, but there's two lenses that I think we need to put on this. Number one is the diversity of classes that we offer. And then the second is scheduling, which is frankly a bigger issue as, you know, a two-time high school parent in Lunenburg. Getting a kid the classes that they want to take and that they need to take, particularly if they're on an AP track, is next to impossible. Like, there is all, there is very seldom a kid that's going to come out of Lunenburg saying they got all the classes they wanted to take. You know, and in some cases, you know, kids are coming back and forth, the guidance, I've heard horror stories of multiple times, trying to work through these issues. Trying to, you know, get to something that is palatable for the kid and the parent and the track that they're on. In some cases, not taking an AP class, or, you know, where they, dead to rights should be in an AP calculus class, having to take an honors class, or something along those lines. We, and I've been very vocal about this, and, you know, we've committed to having a discussion this year around what are we doing to challenge other kids in other grade levels? We're not even discussing that yet as part of our budgeting discussion. But, you know, we're potentially looking at going the other way when we look to increase density in our, in our class sizes in the high school. So at least that's the conclusion that I jumped to, I could be wrong. It's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Now frankly, I think we should have smaller class sizes in our elementary school and middle school too. So it's, you know, I don't see this as a us versus them. But I do think that the that things are more complex in the high school in terms of what our current intent is and the expectations that we have set for our kids and those families.
So I would just refer you back to a document that I shared at the last meeting, that had course sections by name and the number of students enrolled. And you'll see that the low numbers are not just limited to AP classes.
Right. True enough. Brian?
So, one question and some follow-up feedback, I guess. One was, is there any connection with the colors that are on there? Is there any key to that?
No, it's just helpful to separate it out. They're all in the same order, I was wondering.
Yes.
I appreciate the colors.
So I am a high school teacher myself, and I find that, in my opinion, I think it's, it's good to have low numbers in an AP class and a lower-level class where they need more supports. And then I find that college prep honors level courses, they can have higher numbers. And I don't, I don't, I haven't, I don't have the contract memorized, but that was the other part too, is there a maximum in the the teacher contract too? And so, I know some schools will have a maximum number. Usually, even in the cities, it can get really high, like in the 30s, but I, from my experiences, I... get really high, like in the thirties, but I, from, from my experience as a high school teacher, there's, there's a lot of classes in here that are in the teens. I wouldn't want to see classes go over, say, twenty-five, I feel like that, it gets a little, a little much, and I think you see that kind of stuff in the, in the cities where they're into the thirties. But I think college prep honors classes, I think the, those should be able to handle a higher load where the lower level classes, you're going to need aides, you're going to need maybe even a co-teaching and they need a lot more supports.
Laura, did you have any comments?
What is the average class size in the middle school, like eighth grade, the kids who are about to go into high school and get these smaller class sizes? What's their average class size?
So last meeting I provided you some data on that piece.
Well, there it is. A hundred twenty-two divided by five.
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Ah, here we go now.
So.
We have a large group in sixth grade for next year, they'll be moving up, that's the current number for your fifth grade, one forty-nine.
Oh, this is for, alright.
We're looking at six, needing six classrooms for that class next year, and that's twenty-five just about, yeah.
Which obviously we can't, we can't make those numbers bigger.
No, no!
But, but the flip side is, is that, you know, those kids are all effectively taking the second five classes.
Yeah. My thoughts? We want to focus on achievement. That is what we said in our goal, that we were going to look at the budget under an achievement lens. And unfortunately, there has to be cuts made. Now, I don't think we should have to go for, jump from these numbers to twenty-five or twenty-seven or something, I don't see that happening, but I think there are probably places where they could be trimmed in order to get some of that. If we want to look at achievement, we can't have elementary school classes at twenty-eight kids, it's not going to work. And then when they get up here and you want them to have their AP classes, they're not going to be prepared because they won't have had the basics. I, I think this is very important information and we're going to have to take all this information that superintendent is very carefully feeding us a little at a time and hopefully feeding the public too. And we're going to have some hard decisions to make, you know, not unlike the, the kids that are in this building that I, I want to have AP everything, but it doesn't fit because they're singletons, because it's a small school and how are we going to do that? And gee, I want it to be in the band. They have to make hard choices and we're going to have to make hard choices, you know, with an eye on, that's the lens we said we were going to look at, is achievement and, and what does that look like? So these are important, this is important information and I'm not saying we should make, you know, we should get rid of AP classes or anything ridiculous like that, but there has to be places, I know the schedule is hard, I understand that, it's hard to schedule, there's no question, it's hard to schedule. But when the town decided not to regionalize, then we knew small schools, the schedule at the high school becomes very difficult. And as we add more things, like I'd love to add business stuff personally, but that's a topic for another day, but, you know, as we add things, as more AP classes and we create more singletons, then we're running into trouble as far as, you know, we've, we've got to find a happy medium if we have to cut spending on staff, I guess is the best way to put it.
Yeah, I think creating, getting creative too, administrators getting creative with things like how they do study halls with nine and ten, maybe it's a, a geometry class that has nine and ten or an algebra or pre-calculus class type stuff, that could have multiple grades in the courses, that could potentially help too.
So another data point that I provided for you was just some information on positions that were added over the last several years into the local budget. So there are other, other positions that you're aware of that we've added but have been funded, grants funded, through the other grants. So that's just a summary of, a reminder of the positions that we've added over the last handful of years that are in the, in the local budget. For this fiscal year, we added the secretary to handle enrollment and process coordinating for special education meetings. We added a teacher for humanities, they actually hired a, a history licensed teacher at the high school. The year prior, we increased the part-time music teacher at the Turkey Hill from a point five to a point seven so that they could offer a band and chorus as a separate entity down at the Turkey Hill. We added an intervention teacher at the high school, we added an athletic trainer at the middle high school. The year prior to that, we added an assistant principal pre-K to five and a special education teacher at the high school. There were some other staff adjustments in order to get a dedicated assistant principal, you remember? We offset that increase by reducing the number of guidance staff at the middle high school and eliminating a dean, a stipend dean position. To get that social worker at the lower grades, we eliminated the primary school guidance council, that was full-time. So in other words, there we were trading off existing staff positions for different staff positions. In FY twenty-one, we added a special education teacher at Turkey Hill and that's because we created the TLC program. Turkey Hill at the time was the only school that did not have a TLC program, so for continuity of program and services to students, we put that in place. We also added a Wilson reading teacher at the Turkey Hill and back, way back to FY twenty, we created another central office secretary to support at the district level. Again, these are just positions that are, have been added to the local budget, these, over these last handful of years, separate from the positions that were ESAR or other types of grant-funded positions. We had a health grant that allowed us to hire some additional LPNs. We've used our special education grants and our title grants to hire intervention staff, curriculum, instructional, coaches, and other special ed positions. So again, just a, a point of information for context. So you can see, there have been several positions added to the high school in recent years that we did not have. And yet, we were previously able to offer kids at the high school level quite a lot of opportunity, so that's another perspective to take. And you also have some data relative to our BCBA positions. Those are our board-certified behavior analysts. We have two district-wide, one that largely supports the middle high school and the other supports the primary and Turkey Hill grades. And it just provides you a little bit of background as to what kinds of things that they do in that role, because that might be a role that's not as familiar to, to folks. And some of the benefits that we've seen from having these positions. You know, Mrs. Hanscom, our director of special services, did a little bit of analysis relative to the trends and savings, which we believe is connected to the hiring of our second, actually our first and then our second BCBA. They have been able to put plans in place for students to help them be more successful in accessing curriculum here in the district versus an out-of-district placement. They also do assessments, functional behavioral assessments for students. Oftentimes it's connected to a request for evaluation for an IEP. Sometimes we'll do a, a functional behavioral assessment if we have a special ed student who is encountering some disciplinary problems, we'll assess to be sure that the, the discipline isn't a manifestation of the, the disability. So again, just some information on the different types of positions that we have in the district.
Is there a BCBA one at the primary and one at Turkey Hill?
No.
Or what?
There's one that's split to support K-five, pre-K-five, and the other largely supports the sixth through twelve. They, one of, one of, well actually now both, our BCBAs are trained to train others in our CPI, which is strategies for de-escalation, appropriate handling of students, physically handling of students with proper restraint, escorts, that, that sort of thing for students that are dysregulated, potentially dangerous for themselves or others needing to be relocated to another location. Again, this is just, should we make a decision to, to cut one of these positions or reduce the FTEs assigned to BCBAs? This is the work they do, this is the impact they have, and therefore you can anticipate the impact of not having them. Let me just say that, you know, as we continue to analyze the data, there is no way that we will be able to make reductions in any of our staffing and have no impact.
Oh, for sure.
There absolutely will be an impact. It's just, we, we will have to make cuts. So I think we just need to be upfront about what that impact with that cut may involve down the road.
Any questions from anybody?
It's a, it's a lot to look at.
Yeah.
Really it is.
Because we've been, we've been looking to pull information together and look at it ourselves, so it's sobering for sure as you anticipate.
Well, we appreciate, I think this is a good way to bring a few things at each meeting so we can understand what the process is and the importance of each, you know, position, because they are all important and cutting any of them is, leaves a hole, it's no question. So. Alright, there's no other.
On that happy note.
Yes, on that happy note, we'll move on to something a little happier, the class funds update, we're making progress.
We are. At this point, we have either heard from or are actively working with all but two of the classes that were on their original memo. So we will continue to work towards making some sort of connection with the two classes that we have not connected with yet. And at this point, those classes are the class of two thousand and seven and the class of twenty-ten.
So I'm, I'm pretty confident that by the end
I think we're going to find it.
Of the school year.
We'll figure it out.
You know, and I, I, as much as I would like a really big amount of money to work with on for scholarships, the money needs to go where the money is supposed to be. So I am absolutely delighted that we have made this much progress, so.
As am I.
I, I'm pretty sure we will.
And it's the holidays, so when you're watching us on PAC.
Class of oh-seven.
Because that's what they want to do when they come home from college.
That's what they're going to be doing.
Somebody's aunt is watching us on PAC.
Class of two thousand and seven, it's seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents, class of two thousand and ten, it's five thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents, so.
And there are some that we've had conversations with that understand that if they decide not to take the money, that it will be going towards the scholarship. So some of them had indicated that they were going to talk with other class officers to make a decision around whether to pursue retrieving and reclaiming that money for their, for their class or just releasing it to, to the scholarship line, so.
So.
So if you know anyone in the class of oh-seven or two thousand and ten?
I'm, I bet you I've got to know somebody.
Well, I, I figure
You weren't in oh-seven.
That I probably know some of these people, but I haven't, I was going to go look at all the yearbooks, I said I was going to do that, and then they said they were going to send those to, to me and I haven't gotten them yet, because it just ended up being two. As, as luck would have it, my daughter and my niece were in two of these classes, so I couldn't take care of that quick. That was not a problem, so. So good, good progress on that.
Yep.
So now we are on to committee reports. Who has committee reports this evening? Mr. Leighton?
Yes, the primary school met on Monday, we had talked about the school calendar, trying to give some feedback for the, the next year's calendar, about, talking about PD days, parent teacher conferences, the vacations. We also went through some updates, how the PE teacher, Ms. Burns, now the, is the principal up at the high school, and that Turkey Hill was going to be splitting the, the PE at the primary. The, the cleaning has been a challenge, they're down a couple custodians, that's been a challenge at the primary. The rain at the, the buildings was pretty good, they had very minor leaks at the, the primary, so that was good. Hank Helper awards have been going on, the snack with the principal, kindergarten was coming to hundred, module four, reading, happy, healthy, me, and different holidays around this time. The second grade was going on kindness, countdowns and show and share, ELA, they were doing fairy tales with gingerbread versions, different versions of the gingerbread story, and math was doing dollars and coins. The finance committee also met on December seventh, they had the treasurer there to answer questions, they were concerned about different funds and different accounts and the best type of yields or if they could consolidate. Some of them were trust funds, also grants are liquid and they couldn't get interest and they don't have the ability to invest that money. One of the biggest things is the state has laws that they can't lose the principal, money markets were okay, but you couldn't, the treasurer made the point that you really can't compare personal investing with municipal investing, it's not apples to apples and they have to follow Mass General Law. And there was a discussion on fees and the accounts, but the Mass General Law they mentioned was chapters four, chapter forty-four, section fifty-four and fifty-five. And the town manager also, that, I mentioned the town policy on investments on page forty-seven. They also mentioned about capital planning, about They also mentioned about capital planning, uh, about input there. Talked about the school committee meeting and the window project, and what was the, the question, what the MSBA penalty would be. Mr. Passios also mentioned the, the green communities could potentially help out with the boiler, uh, in the schools. The town manager mentioned that the, the town lawyer mentioned that MSBA recovery, uh, they recover any payments and they stop any future payments, and it wa- it was basically a major penalty. And they also questioned what year they should put, that the window should be placed. There was some back and forth there, um, about the years, and then the, they also talked about how they try to balance the projects and capital planning, so it's not all the kind of the same categories or same theme, and that was it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Laura?
Uh, Turkey Hill did not meet this month and will meet in January.
Okay.
The high school advisory committee met two weeks ago. I was unable to attend the meeting, I was traveling. But I did, did meet with Ms. Visantri the following day, and we had a, a very good discussion principally about the budget. But, uh, I don't, I don't have the notes from the meeting, so. Capital planning committee met Monday, um, and reviewed the, uh, the initial, the initial scoring that the committee does, ranking the, I believe, thirty-five requests that, that we considered this year. Unfortunately, the way it's supposed to work is, all five members submit their scores, and then it kind of, there's a big reveal at this particular meeting. In this case, one of the members was not present at the meeting and had not submitted his scores. So we got a eighty percent.
Right.
Preview, um, which, uh, and it, there, there, there's basically an average score for each of those. So of the, of the items that, uh, we submitted, and you can kind of look at, okay, if we, if we fund capital over the last few years, we funded it a million and a half dollars, if you assume that we're gonna do that again, um, you can kind of project where the line will be. We had basically three item, two items that I think are likely to be above the line, given, assuming there's no big surprises that come out at tomorrow night's meeting. Both the, uh, window film for the Turkey Hill, and the, uh, the assessment project, uh, for Turkey Hill. Both, uh, there's, their blended score was nine point five, which actually made them tied for fifth on the, on the list. Uh, and then the next one down on our list was the dump truck, which I believe was ninth. And then, it might have been a little bit deeper, I, I'm sorry, I don't recall the actual numbers in my head. And then, the rest of them were quite a bit further down the list, and I, I, you know, I, I don't have great expectations for them coming in above the line, depending upon, again, uh, how capital planning is funded, so.
Sure.
And again, very preliminary, because it was only four votes out of five. And we can change our votes, uh, so, you know, it's very preliminary. Suffice to say, we'll have a good idea, uh, tomorrow, at least in terms of what the recommendation is of the, the capital planning committee, we're meeting at, uh, at six o'clock tomorrow at the Ritter Building.
Thank you very much. What I have is the master planning committee met on Thursday, December fourteenth. The consultant reported that there were two hundred and five survey replies to date. He was encouraged with the democra- demographic spread of participants. He was hoping to get more, um, people that rented rather than own their own homes, and they were trying to figure out a good way to, to get more information from those people. There was a conversation that said there was a definite rise in the amount of surveys received after you put out the blast that, um, to the parents. So he, he feels that that was very successful. The major concern from the survey to date is preserving the agricultural character of the town and the preservation and repurposing of municipal buildings. Mr. Passios did make a comment about how his comment, uh, the, his meaning, the consultant, Rami, his comment at the previous public meeting about how we, um, maintain our public buildings well was somewhat suspect. Paraphrasing, but, but yes, to which we agree. The next public meeting will be held on February first to coalesce visions and goals. They're gonna do two meetings, one in the afternoon at the senior center, and one in the evening, either at Turkey Hill or at the senior center. I haven't gotten a definite, they're playing with both. So I haven't got a definite one way or the other. The finance committee nominating committee met on December thirteenth, and Tiffany Tavarez was appointed to the finance committee, and we thank her for offering to serve, and I am delighted to say the finance committee is fully seated.
Wow.
And we will have no more of these nominating committee meetings, hopefully, for quite a while. So that's what I had for reports. Anyone else that I, anything I missed? Okay, so now we are at public comment. Is there anyone with public comment at the end of our meeting? If you're listening online, you can raise your hand. Or Mr. Passios?
Well, again, Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. Clearly, without having discussed this with my fellow finance committee members, my comments will be personal comments from the taxpayer of Lunenburg. I would not want to be in your seats for the next fiscal round that you're in, diving into right now. But I do want to make the comment, and I know you are all very much aware, that through the process of hiring, uh, under the ESAR one and two grant money, the cautions were always made, that that money is gonna go away, and that there's gonna have to be hard decisions made, whether you keep those positions and cut others, or vice versa. I just wanted to verbalize that again now. I've sat through or watched videos of multiple meetings over the past two or three years, and, and, you know, we knew we were headed down this road.
We did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, just one other thought on that?
Yes, yes.
We knew that we were looking at, uh, something in the ballpark of, uh, loss of six hundred and fifty thousand in positions that would equal that. With a combination of increases to other elements of the budget, particularly what we did not see coming, a ten percent increase to health insurance. That, that takes what we thought would be six hundred and fifty, maybe a little bit more, up to nearly one point five million, um, in total, in, inclusive of the six hundred and fifty. That's a big difference from what we had been prepared or preparing for for the last two and a half years.
Once more, Mr. Passios.
Dave Passios, again, uh, I could ask the town manager to this, but I'm, I'm figuring you guys might know too, because you were involved in, uh, the account being set up a couple of years ago. The health insurance stabilization account, was that thoroughly depleted? Or do we still have that available?
I don't know.
That's a good question.
That's a very good question.
Because we do, we've already dove into that once after it was created, because we got a big jump a year or two later.
Yeah, I don't.
That's a very good question, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. Topics for future discussion. Where are we at?
I think we have a lot to discuss.
Yeah, I think it's basically gonna be budget-driven, to be honest, but I'm sure there are other things that.
It should be fun year to start this.
Yes, you did. You certainly did, um.
I, you know.
We don't have anything dragging.
Yeah, I, I, I would just, you know, like to offer, and, and this could be a topic of discussion, or we, we could just, you know, a- ask the superintendent to, to think about this in coming, I'm not exactly sure how to, how to put this, but, I, I would like to see some sort of resolution, um, around MSBA responsibility. And, and I, I, my, my guess is that MSBA doesn't show up in anybody's job description in Lunenburg. But, but this is something that we're gonna have to track, and I, you know, it could even be something where, you know, there's a, a person or a team, or, and that team could include a school committee member, or whatever, but I, I feel like, I, I feel like thi- this is something that we cannot afford to be presumptive about in any way, shape, or form going forward. And, and, I'm not exactly sure what to do about it, but I think it's gotta be addressed, so that we can be reasonably confident going in the next year that we know we're down for.
I had had a thought, dealing with MSBA, I don't know if it makes any sense to do it or not, but that after budget was done, once we were in, like, April or something, and we were, does it make sense to ask somebody like Tracy Knobick to come in and explain it?
I would love it.
Would that, would that make sense?
My thought would be to wait till our finance director comes and have her perspective on it.
Yeah, yeah, well, she would be here by then, so that might be something we might want to talk about, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that the MSBA, because we reached out to, to Tracy as well, when I was trying to pull together some informational slides from MSBA. I did some outreach to, um, MAS-C as well as MAS-S to see if they had resources.
Nobody knows anything.
No. So I, I don't think that.
You don't think she has that kind of information?
I, I don't think that she'll be the best resource for giving you the, the ins and outs of it, because if, if she were, she'd have a slide deck.
She would.
For this.
Yeah, 'cause she's like that.
And if you don't, so.
I mean, there's a, and Carol and I had a private conversation about this this morning, and it, I, I also think, in, in full disclosure, I, I don't think that we are being as well-served as we could be by MAS-S and MAS-C in this regard. Tracy's comment to me when I asked about notification around the rule changes proposals was that they put it on the listserv, which my reply back was, how buried nineteen ninety-seven of us. I, I just, we've got to, w- w- I think, you know, another thing we need to do is communicate higher expectations.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it, it's baffling to me.
So, okay. All right, then we will move along. The next thing we have is executive session to conduct strategies, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Oops, I'm reading off the wrong one, sorry, it's the old one. Let me go back to the other. I knew that was wrong. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. There we go.
Make a motion to go to executive session at seven fifty-five PM and adjourn following.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.